I'll forage to receive and discuss another grade and update regarding the Brunson Theater project.
Mayor Katz, we have Bob Randall and company here tonight to go over the latest and greatest based on comments that y'all made last time to get your input so we can get this thing under full design and get it going. We also, y'all expressed a lot of interest in the lighting, so we have the lighting folks here also to talk about that and to go over some of the costs associated with the lighting because it's a substantial portion of the facility. So I'll turn it over to Bob, Amy, whoever wants to go over the budget.
Good evening. It's been six weeks roughly since we were here before you to present our preliminaries and we would like to present again tonight in the same format. We'll let Bronlin from National Signs go through her latest package. There's a lot of nice graphics to look at and I'm sure there'll be lots of questions. And then after that, we'll move in and Amy will go through the changes that we received and comments from our previous meeting. Hopefully it'll be pretty brief on that part and then we'll go into the budget. At that time, we can talk about the cost for the sign each as well as for the building. In talking with Ron and staff, we've pulled those out to where you can deal direct with National Signs through the buy board arrangement and negotiate that deal separate while we're finishing up the building. Bronlin? She has a sample, I think she may want to pass around so y'all can take a look at it. Does she want me to pass that around?
Good afternoon, everybody. How are we all doing? Good, thank you. Further to our first meeting, we have upgraded the drawings to what you guys requested and had spoken about. First of all, the light that's going around will be on page. I'm just quickly jumping so that you guys know what you're touching and then we'll go Underneath the canopy, from the beginning of the canopy right through to the glass door, we are quoting on this LED tubing. It is a flexible tubing. Once heated, you can bend it, so we will be able to get the forms and shapes on the canopies. We've got two options. We've got the 594 feet, this layout, or the 361 feet, which is spaced at 1 foot 6 inches apart, but we'll get back to that.
Is the cost prohibitively expensive?
For the LEDs, for the square footage, it is quite high. Do you want to go over the cost now or later?
I'm just curious. Is it substantially? I'm just curious. I mean, it seems logically like the one foot and would be brighter and would be better.
Okay, so on that one, you're looking at... The one with the more is $38,800, where on the one with the less, 1 foot 6 inch space, is $26,700.
Okay, so 12,000, no difference.
Okay, but there's about 200 feet difference in the two.
Yeah, it's not bad.
So what we have changed, we are now proposing a 15-foot LED on each side with light bars, the Baytown logo, the other EMC, and the flag pole. We put a proper flag pole this time. So on page, sign type A is the actual Brunson Theater logo, a blade sign. We've included the triangle that was missing originally. It was brought to my attention about a week and a half ago that I was missing a triangle, which is part of the Baytown thing that needs to be there, so we rectified that and added that in. We've added the flag pole, so that it's there now too, and with the flag. We have still got the S11 over there, the white light bulbs, but we are trying to get blue, we're trying to source blue or green, because if you look at your photos from like 40 years ago, there was a bluish-green bulb, so we are trying to source that to see if we can offer you that instead of the white. At the moment though, this yellow over there is the same as the tube that went around, it's just that one's white, this would be yellow, and that would also be running down the front and along the front of the sign too. We've still got the LED RGB green light at the top. And this is what your sphere would look like, top view and side view and front view. Your Brunson Theater, the actual word Brunson, is channel letters mounted to the blade sign, internally illuminated, and your S11s are running down the front with your tubing along the side. Canopy will be provided by others. We will be mounting the LED EMCs, full color 15.85 EMCs, which will be controlled by remote or your cellphone. Your Baytown logo, we've quoted with having flat cutouts and acrylic facing, so that your actual logo is now in there and it signifies Baytown, so we've added that. Okay, along the top, we've got the lights that go along the top, the S11s. What we're also trying to source for you guys at the moment is rotating lights, so that it actually looks like dispel lights, so it changes and it runs. So we are still in the process of trying to source that, but we haven't found a service provider yet. But at the moment, we are quoting with the red channel with the white bulbs, and they stationed there at the moment. On this page, you're looking at the curve lighting. It's going to be that, but inside aluminum tubing, and there's going to be 16 parts of them, and they'll just fill up the space that was open, so we just added something extra to make it look better. There's your option one and option two of the under lighting. Originally, we had only came and proposed this section here, and then we were requested to quote on the whole lot, so that did add quite a bit of lighting. This will be the front view of the sign, and then your nighttime with your RGB lighting, up lights and white up lights upwards along the walls. I'm getting the word, excuse me. And then your three colors. Any questions?
Are they interchangeable, is that what they're doing?
The RGB, the blue, the red and the green, those are interchangeable by remote, so you'll be able to change those to colors. The white ones will be white permanently, just to highlight the accents on the wall, to bring that back up.
Just to confirm where you have, the Baytown Strong will be programmable, we can put anything we want to up there in LED lights.
Yes. It's an EMC, it's remotely controlled by your cellphone. You can have up to four people control it with the cellphone, so you could be sitting at home and update it, do some things, whatever's happening at Baytown that week or day.
You can drop and drag pictures as well, so it doesn't have to be just text, you can either picture or, you know, if you want to do Google.
Speak into the mic.
Sorry. You can also add drop and drag any kind of pictures or gifs or anything like that, so if you wanted to do an image versus just text and copy, you can do that as well.
This is Sunea, she was not with me the last time. Any other questions?
On the rotating lights, how was it back originally there? Was it solid or...
They were just clear.
But I mean, when you say rotating lights, is that more of a, I mean, like, I think a blinking or...
No, interchangeable lights. See where the old squares are on, those are going to stay clear, and then the inside where it's solid, you're going to have lighting, so the wall will light up different colors. It's like spotlights. Yeah.
Is that what...
But it's not going to...
I understand that, but when you said the rotating lights, is it...
These lights, yeah?
Yes.
Those, we're trying to get them so that they change every four seconds, they follow.
Okay.
So they're chasing.
Right, like a trailer, yeah, I got you, okay.
Any other questions about the sign?
I've got a question. On the sign, electronic sign versus Baytown Strong, is there like a five-year warranty on that or...
All our signs carry five-year warranty on all signs, all parts, all labor.
Okay, and after the five years, are there still panels that plug in, like 12-inch by 12-inch that pop in and out?
On the EMCSR, we... The service provider that supplies us.
Actually, let me clarify, just on the warranty, the way that that works, it's the five-year parts and labor, all warranty, I mean, excuse me, all parts, all labor as she stated, and then beyond that, we can still do service calls as necessary if you need to, and we would do that on time and material, so we would just give you a quote, letting you know how much that part would be, and then how long we think it would take for us to do it, and then you can give us the go-ahead or not. That would then come with a one-year warranty for that particular panel. If we see several panels out, at that point, we're going to give you a quote to replace that handful for a one-year warranty for those pieces, or we're going to go ahead and give you a quote for a full new one, new replacement, just to give you the cost difference, because sometimes it makes sense to go ahead and get the full five-year warranty. Usually that does not have to happen until closer to the seven to 10-year, when you start to see some panels start to go out. For that first seven years, I mean, it's pretty solid, you'll have very little issues, and for the five years, it's added no cost to you whatsoever, so.
I think that sign's a lot better than what we were talking about last time, was sticking letters up there and an electronic sign.
Yeah, that's a lot better.
But after the five-year service contract runs out, there is some maintenance that goes along with that, and it's expensive to replace those panels, and it's, there's a cost associated with it. We've got one of your signs where at work, and they're nice, but after five years, depending on how much sunlight they've had on, they start to fade a little bit, and there's a coloring issue on them. But I like the fact that it's programmable and we can put any message we want there, and it's electronic, so.
Well, I think we caught a break on that one because this space is pretty much due north, so hopefully the sunlight will be...
There's not going to be a lot of sunshine when it runs out.
Right, we got lucky on that.
But is five years pretty common? That seems like a short time.
For, on the warranty? You're talking about on the warranty?
Yes.
Actually, that's a typical manufacturer warranty, so what you'll see actually for most of the competitors is they'll do a parts warranty, because the manufacturer will warranty that part of it, and then they will not warranty the labor. We go ahead and warranty the labor, just because the components that we use on our sign, they're higher grade, they last longer, it allows for us to have less service calls so that we can keep up with any service calls in a very timely fashion, and then really it ends up being better for the clients because it has a much longer life than the five years typically.
Also with the electronics units that we use, they've manufactured it so that if one part goes out, your sign still continues working, and you'll just have one black square that is out. It's not like other EMCs where if something goes out, the whole sign goes off or aligns, so it's a better supplier that we use.
Other questions? Thank y'all.
I did include your, you might want to go over your budget real quick? It's next in line.
Okay, so...
Just real briefly to kind of talk about the high point.
Okay, so what we've done is, sign type A was the blade sign, which is the whole blade sign, including the sphere, the flag pole, the RGB lighting, so that will be the 80,000. The sign cabinet with the Baytown logo in it, that will be the 4,900. The EMCs, the two EMCs are the 133, 200. The horizontal light bars, these are the two running along the canopy, top and bottom. The horizontal light bars are the little 16 pieces that are filling the rest of the And then these are your up lights. No, I'm lying, sorry, I'm incorrect. These are your under canopy lights. Okay. I was making sure I wasn't missing anything, so.
So the total cost is, for what you presented here today, is right around $300,000?
Yes.
One of the things that I want to clarify, as you're looking at that, when you go into the details and the specs of the proposal, you'll see that we go into the detail of like the type of paint that we're using. We're using the polyurethane paint. It's a type of automobile-grade paint, so the way that it's made, we even take the extra steps to go ahead and caulk it so that there's no light leaks. When we put certain parts together, we weld versus, you know, doing other type of attachments, and then we mechanically fasten all of the interior of the sign as well versus using glue or VHB tape, so that's why it can withhold a 140 mile an hour wind load. And when they went and changed the code multiple times over the years, we've never had to really adjust it until this very last one, when they changed it to the 139 miles. We were building ours to 120 mile an hour wind loads, well, as long as I've known. So when it went from 90 to the 110, there was no issues. It wasn't until they changed to the 139 after this last hurricane that we then adjusted it from an engineering standpoint. Outside of that, we don't have a lot of service calls even after hurricanes, so they're very well-made. We actually would love to invite any and all of you back to our shop to do a tour. I can also bring one of the units, if you'd like to see it, to one of the meetings here, and I can bring it one evening, and you can have it in the parking lot, and have you guys go take a look at it, see it from afar, see how the resolution is, as well as get up close to it and see how it's constructed, and be able to take a panel out, look at that from that standpoint. So absolutely, do your due diligence with us because we're very proud of our product, and we feel very comfortable that, you know, that we have the clients that we have because of the type of work that we do, and we do look for repeat business. It's not just a one-time, you know, sell kind of thing. It's a relationship, we want to build relationships with our municipals that, you know, we work with, which we do work with a lot. So, you know, anything that you guys want to check out over there, we'd love for you guys to see it and be able to see how the sign is actually constructed from the inside out.
Thank you all, appreciate it. So the presentation today, are we going in the right direction? Do y'all like what we're doing here?
Yeah, just one question. At the top of your proposal, it did show option one. Is there a second option or is that just...
It was the LED lights, so remember I was showing you in the top corner, you'll see it says option two.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Option one.
So I showed you the more, through the more expensive one.
Yeah, one has additional lighting.
Okay, Bob?
Hello, I'll just take you quickly through the changes that we made to the, mostly the interior of the building. I'm going to skip ahead here. So one of the major changes we did is we brought the circular sofa up to the front where it used to be, and we put a reception desk area where the snack bar used to be, which seemed like a very logical spot for it. The other thing that we did was increase the amount of enclosure around the conference room. It still does not have a ceiling, but the walls go up eight feet, and there are sliding doors at each of the corners, so I think there would be a little more privacy in that space. We moved an office, moved a tourism office back here, or added a tourism office that's accessible from the front. And the other major thing that we did was we included in the courtyard, I'm not sure how to get rid of this, oops, oh no. Go back? Okay, so you can see in the courtyard, we added a paved area and a grass area. Thank you. We have a small emergency exit here, out the back, but the larger openings that were in the courtyard are no longer in there because they were too expensive. The grass courtyard would be infilled so that it's level with the floor of the incubator space. And I know you're kind of short on time, so I will flip through. Sorry, skipping through to the end here. So here's a 3D view from the main entrance with the reception here and the couch. I know this isn't exactly like the one was there originally, but it's a little closer and we could probably find or make something that's similar. Here's a view kind of from above, showing the top of the conference center with the work areas here, conference in the middle and on the other side, and there's a lot of area, wall space for murals or display. Here's a view kind of right down in the work areas. And here's a view towards the front, this being the reception area. And here's a view in the courtyard now, grassy.
So the major changes were the sofa was moved to the front, the glass partition was put back, the reception desk was located off to the side, and she already mentioned some of the other things. It's very similar to what y'all saw before with those changes, based on y'all's conversation. Is that, are y'all comfortable with what you're seeing now, because the next phase is actually to move into design?
I have a quick question about the courtyard. Is that accessible to anybody or just to the people from the incubator program?
At this point, it's just people that enter the front of the building.
So the door would essentially remain locked from the outside and it would be a free exit?
Yes.
Out of the courtyard?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, you could use it for events, but it would be controlled events, it wouldn't be open on all sides.
Kim, you want to hit the budget real quick, please?
Sure.
And we know y'all are pressed for time, that's the only reason we're pushing through.
So the bottom line of the budget, you can see, is about 1.4. I should highlight that there are allowances in there. For example, the sign is not included in that budget, nor is furniture, so that's a separate amount that would be by owner.
So we have, we have some latitude here, obviously, that we can allow you to make that investment in the aesthetic elements that we talked about at first, and my encouragement would be to make sure we have those elements that really make this project pop. So, you know, barring any other indication from y'all tonight, our intention would be move forward into that, the next process of design and going into construction. But we do want to hear from you and know that we are hitting the points that you wanted us to hit, and you're satisfied with the product right now.
So an all-in number right now is just under $2 million. You've got 1.4 for the building, you've got professional services of $150,000, but the sign, if you want to go with what we talked about, is $300,000, and then $90,000 for furniture, fixtures and equipment, so it's like 1.95, something like that, so that's an all-in number. You budgeted $1,005,000. We had $600,000 budget for infrastructure, which we might have some savings from that because we've done some stuff in-house, and then you've got some contingency money. There's roughly $550,000 left in new initiatives. If you like what you're seeing, I know it's a little bit more than what we originally talked about, but I think this is what it's going to take to get us what y'all have asked for. So we need, we just need some input from y'all tonight to see if that's acceptable and...
I do like the changes. I will tell you that that sofa was burgundy crushed velvet, just so you know, but if you can find that.
I have a picture. I've been looking all over.
Passion is cyclical, I bet we can find it.
But, and this may not be the appropriate time to ask this question, but I guess my first question is, is are the offices for the incubator program, are they ready for those businesses to occupy? And do we have any businesses that have expressed any interest?
No, we have not.
Okay. But have we attempted? I mean, we haven't really started the marketing.
We're not, we're still putting together, we're still working with EDF to administer that program, but we want to get a little closer to construction.
What's going to be the capacity for the courtyard? How many, 200 people? Three?
I think it's smaller than 200.
I think that's my favorite part. I think it's a really unique event space, and I can see that being a revenue generator to lease that out.
We can always make it available.
At 15 square feet per person, elbow to elbow, you could put 300 people.
I'll go with 200.
The courtyard for...
But realistically, half that, 150 probably to 200.
Networking events.
It's too early for us to forecast out of that 1.4 million, how much of the courtyard we can include. We're trying to prep it and protect the parapet cap, we're trying to get the grade raised, and hopefully, we may be short of the topsoil and turf, but we are putting the money in there for the fire exit for the plaza to, when you come out the back door to get through. So when we get into the working drawings and get through with the structural and the MEP and run our new numbers, we'll be able to come back and see how much of the grass and turf we can...
I guess the point of my comment was, you mentioned it was a little more over budget than we'd originally planned, but I think because some of these elements are going to be revenue generators, it doesn't bother me as much.
And the building itself is in line, it's just that some of the elements that we've discovered late that we think would really make this an acceptable project are the ones that are kind of putting us a little over.
We just learned tonight that Mother Nature started to go ahead on demolition, that the inn in Brunson filled up with ice and dropped down. Russell Hammond is back here, he's picked it up, he's got it in his car, but it could have been dangerous.
Inn off of Brunson.
On the shaft.
To see what it was made of, and I stopped it, it was on the ground. Had to have been there since last night, it was filled with ice. Now, one of the things I was going to say when I speak, if, God forbid, if somebody was walking underneath that, the other ones, you can see them moving in the wind, I've been watching it for a year. It's time to renew it.
I'm glad he found that, otherwise we'd see it on eBay. You know?
Probably so. Nobody wore it on their head.
What are, what are next steps then? If they, if they like what they've seen tonight, where do we go from here?
We wanna engage the structural engineer to figure out all the detailing of the structure and get it going and then bring the MEP engineer on and interface with the, the sign people from National Signs and, and get the documents moving to stay on our schedule.
Okay, that's what, that's my point. If we're gonna try, we're shooting for December of eighteen opening, we gotta get this thing cranked.
I, I have one question on that. Could you where the grass is at? Your right wall, the back wall, the outside? Is that a door there or is it just that one little door on the side?
It's that one little, it's one new door that's gonna interface with the new parking lot. Cause we have to check accessibility standards for that and parking spaces and fire marshal ingress and egress.
They did have some other stuff planned for, for future options, but, uh, we've taken those out for now for cost purposes.
Yeah, I understand. I just wondered cause wasn't said, but it kinda looked like there could be one later.
Sure.
And we are gonna coat the trusses in the open courtyard to prevent further deterioration as we discussed.
I would like to say yes, but I have to reserve judgment till we get in and see how the structural detailing's gonna come out and run numbers when we get through working drawings. We've got a line item of about forty-five thousand for painting. And, but part of that, we have another twenty-four thousand for masonry, patching and tucking. So I wanna say I think there's enough money to do a dry fog or something to protect those. Um, but the cleaning of the trusses before you paint, that's another, another question I don't have an answer for right now.
And all, all the old, all the existing bar joists will be demoed and come out?
Yes, what we're planning to do is clear span with a twenty-two gauge steel deck, four and a half inches deep, and eliminate the need for all those nasty little bar joists. It'll clean it up greatly inside.
It will, they need to go...
And it'll be more economical, too. And it'll have its integral acoustical foam slid into the ribs.
Well, it's a little more than the anticipated, Mayor, but as I've learned from you from time to time, it, it is advantageous to the city to do things in a first, first-class manner. And we do most things in a first-class manner. And, you know, like I say, I'm, I, I never like to be over budget, but it, it, you know, we need to follow suit, doing things in this manner and, yeah, I'm, I'm all in favor of it.
Mayor, I, I have to add with Chris, I, I do agree with him. Um, what we've asked for has been presented and it looks really good as far as like it was said that it can be a moneymaker. I mean, we can lease out the meeting room, we can lease out the courtyard, take monies off of there so that we can eventually pay ourselves back, so.
Be a very nice meeting. You get after it. Uh, Russell Hammond had signed up to speak. Russell, you wanna come on up?
Mayor, council members, yeah, I came up here to, uh, to talk and to, and to see. And for those who know me, I run a history group and, uh, uh, I'm impressed with the drawings. I work at a sign company, that's, I'm a sign designer myself. And, um, I'm very pleased with what I've seen. I would like, if it's possible, um, I have access to the Honeycutt, um, photographs that some of y'all have seen, that I would like to donate good, large-size pictures to be put strategically throughout the new structure for the nostalgia effect. Um, I think it's best for the average Baytonian, after the place is completed, to walk in, people that have been there back in the day, to walk in and see some pictures, kinda get the theater feel and then realize, you know, it's a tourism center and it's a small business incubator. So that's why I'm here, is to volunteer my services to help the city. But then as I was leaving my sign company, driving down Texas Avenue that I drive down every day and look at that sign every day, I didn't do it yesterday. And I drove by and I looked and the S is missing from the west, east face. And I go, well, maybe the people that are making the signs took it. And I looked on the ground and there it said. I pulled over and it had been, it had been there at least twenty-four hours. It was, it was full of ice. I had to pick it up and gently, lovingly, cause I love that sign, knock the ice off. And I barely got it in my little Toyota Camry, but I've got it. Thank goodness, an honest, semi-honest person got it. I wanna give it back to the city.
Emphasis on city.
You know? It is what it is, uh, um. You know, that's why everybody's here, it's time for something and, and esp- I think it's crazy. It's a sign from the sign to fix it. The sign screaming, "Fix me." And it's, it's a godsend that somebody wasn't walking underneath it because that thing is extremely heavy. And I would like to bring it in and whoever, I finally got to touch the sign after all. You know, and so I've got that. And, I mean, I think that something, a barricade or something needs to be put around that area because if Joe Citizen's walking there right now, you can see it move. It's dangerous, it's dangerous. So, um, I just wanna tell y'all my approval of what I've saw and to offer my donation of very good-sized nostalgic photographs of the outside of the Brunson kids standing in line with the kiddie show, the concession stand at Christmas. It's, it's very nice. And, um, whatever y'all wanna do with the, with the S in my car, it's up to you guys. So I got some pictures of it, to be standing by it. So it's just, it's, it's a sign from the sign, that's all I can say.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Russell, appreciate it.
We'll take you up on the, the photos and...
Absolutely, no, I think that'd be great. I think that'd be great for the interiors. And, and also I enjoy your site a whole lot. Very interesting.
Yeah, I do, too. I'm a member.
The street signs were very, very interesting, evidently. Did, can we get Public Works with a bucket truck or something, take a look at that sign?
It shall be done.
I'd rather not, if we can avoid putting barricades, I'd rather secure it.
I saw you guys talking.
If we can. If, if y'all get somebody down, take a look at it, make sure, uh, we do not want anybody hurt at this stage of the game particularly. Uh, but I, I think the consensus of us is we're pleased with what the drawings look like and ready, ready for you guys to get going. We are, and it should be emphasized that, uh, you know, coming in over budget was, you know, the, the director that's absent. You know, that was at our behest, actually, a lot of the changes that were made, so we got what we asked for. Well, as y'all know my philosophy, we get one shot at a lot of these things, we wanna do it right. We want it to, we want it to last, and people be proud of it, so. Very good. Uh, Mr. Man, do you have a report?
We are, we're still on track. Uh, it's been our ambition since the beginning to make sure that when the Christmas parade comes around next year, that we don't postpone it, but we, uh, we, we actually have a ribbon cutting, uh, on that day next year. And so it's the reason why we wanted to push this to you so quickly. And we know we're pressed for time, several, several have to be on the other side of town, uh, soon. So, uh, appreciate you being here, moving this along.
Very good. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion to second, all in favor, P C I.
Aye.
All opposed.